Write something up for you and send it to you in the morning.
Okay, that'd be great.
Is Jason coming tonight?
As far as I know, Adam's not, but my understanding is Jason is. He has not contacted.
Jason told me he was gonna be here, so I don't know. It's a pretty short agenda.
It's pretty good, I mean, it did a good job telling what the issue was. I mean, based on the information I know. I left it only three people commented on it. I posted it first thing this morning.
Yeah. My watch says 6:30, I'll tell him on Blair's.
I got 30 seconds. Last is 6:24. I like the timer.
Sure, no wrong. Would you call the row please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number, excuse me, item number two is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held August 6th, 2018. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held July 12th, 2018. Excuse me, A should be 2018 too, not 2016. Item number C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018 in the amount of $61,014.53 and approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2018, 2019 in the amount of $2,331,207.71.
Will they approve?
Second. Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? Would you call for the vote on the consent?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number three, receive a report from Select Actuarial and accept the annual actuarial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018.
Mayor and trustees, we have used Select Actuarial Services for the last 18, 19 years or so, and they've always done a great job for us. We have Laura Sprouse here from Select Actuarial Services, she's here tonight, and tonight she'll be giving us a summary of the results of her actuarials, actuarial study.
Good evening, thanks for having me back. I know you've all received a copy of the report. Tonight I'm gonna go through the handout that I think you also have copies of, it has some graphs and tables that I'll be referring to. So, each year Select Actuarial Services performs an actuarial study for the city of Moore in regards to the workers' compensation, the self-insured health program, and the automobile and general liability claims, where you have a large deductible and retain risk for those line items. The city, the governmental accounting standards require that you carry a liability to reflect the cost of these claims that have occurred, that happened in the past that will pay out in time in the future. So that is the first objective of our studies, to help estimate that line item for the balance sheet. And then the second objective is to forecast the expected losses for the upcoming fiscal year. So we kinda, we have a look back and a look forward. On page three is a summary of the look back, this is the total required reserves for unpaid liabilities, and you can see broken down for each of the coverages that I mentioned. The total reserve need is $2,327,000 of this amount. Unpaid health claims is $607,000, workers' compensation claims, $1,378,000, the auto and general liability claims, $307,000, and there's other tort liability for $35,000. Again, all of these claims are events, injuries, events, health dates of service that happened prior to June 30th of 2018. On page four is a summary, and this compares to last year's reserve balance. Last year the total reserve was $2,230,000, so there is an increase this year in the reserve, and if you compare line by line, health benefits are slightly down from last year. Workers' compensation claims are up a little bit, and that's due to primarily increases on about four open claims. Some of these events are injuries that took place in 2005, or 2011 and '12, and a new one in 2017 that have just had increases on these claims relative to last year, as more information becomes known and more care or services needed for these individuals. So that's just an increase on those workers' compensation claims. Liability is pretty stable, and the tort claim did not have a payment during this time period. So that's the comparison to last year. A little bit of discussion for each of the lines, as far as the health benefits. The claim payments for fiscal year ending June 30, 17, which that year we would say is complete now, was about $5,180,000, slightly less than where we had forecasted. The 1718 year, which is the year that just ended, there are still claims that have, were made and have not been paid, and that's the $607,000 outstanding, but the year did close with less in claims than expected. In fact, we reduced our estimate for 1718 by about $778,000. So we think that cost for this year will be $4.8 million for claims already paid and the remaining $600,000 or so that's left to pay. And the main reason, I think, is that there have not been as many of the larger stock loss claims as there had been, and looking at the history, you had two years, the 15, 16, and 16, 17 years, they were just a little higher than average, and this year ended a little bit back down where previous years had been. So far in calendar 2018, as of June 30th, there were no claims at the stock loss, but I think in the month since, that you may have a claim that is reaching $125,000 in Workers' compensation, I already mentioned that you had increases on four open claims that are a little bit larger claims on some older years. Total increase on that line was $269,000 in ultimate, so that's the total cost of all claims through June 30, 18. Liability was very close to expected, and we decreased that line in ultimate by $77,000. So overall, pretty stable with just some increases on some, some open events for workers' comp. So for the look forward, the budget for the 18, 19 year, the year that just commenced, the total budget is $5,937,000. Most of this is for health claims, $5,331,000 for health claims. These claims tend to pay out quickly, whereas workers' compensation as a total budget is $480,000, but those claims stay open, they take longer to pay, and so on the reserve side, they're a larger portion of the liability. The liability line, that's auto and automobile and general liability, $126,000 for that line item, and that's pretty, pretty stable as we'll see. The next few pages break down by line of business. Health, you can see, has come down. There's a column showing last year what we estimated, 18, 19, and now our current, because we always forecast several years out, so we, we've come down on our estimate for 18, 19, and that's due in part because 17, 18 came in a little lower than expected, so that just goes into our projections for next year. So the $5,331 is the estimate for 18, 19, and you can see as a cost per employee that that's lower than what we estimated, estimated last year. $1,592 per employee versus $1,694 last year. And then for 19, 20, again, we do project out several years, the rate increases by about 3% for medical inflation, and we add a few more employees, and so the total cost for that year is about $5.5 million. For workers' compensation, despite having those increases on some older claims, our forecast for 18, 19 is actually down, and part of that is to the favorable environment that we have been seeing in Oklahoma in regards to workers' compensation reforms and some of the trends in claim frequency and severity. So, that just means that we think the costs are gonna be less than they were in the past, and so we've brought our estimate down from last year. If you rate it per $1,000 of payroll, you spend about $21.57 per $1,000 of payroll on the retained portion of the workers' comp claims. So again, that rate is down 12% from last year, and I've noted that we've given a little more emphasis on Oklahoma benefit levels and trends that we've seen. Auto and GL are very stable, the rate is essentially unchanged, payroll's up a little from the estimate that we provided last year, so the total forecast is 126, slightly higher than last year's estimate of 118. So that's a very stable piece. And then finally, on page 11, just summarizing all these results, the total liability on your balance sheet for past claims is $2,327, then looking forward, the forecast for 18, 19, $5,937, and a total of $6,165 for the following fiscal year. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Make motion, we accept, three or four.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number four is consider approval of a contract in the amount of $6,350 with Meachack and Associates for Southeast Orange Basin sectional detention study, this committee
Mayor and council, this study, if approved, would cover the, what we call the southeast quadrant of the city. This is a area of the city that has the most undeveloped land that is ripe for development, but it also holds the most floodplain and floodways within the city. We looked at this study because we didn't necessarily want to leave it up to a piecemeal development plan that has drainage by different engineers. We wanted to look at this from one engineer and come up with a detention plan for the entire southeast quadrant. This, if approved, this study would look at the, the size and the placement of detention facilities within this area, and then we would be able to have that information to give to developers whenever they come in to inquire about development. This option would really put us in the driver's seat wherein it comes to detention and floodplain work in this area. Once this complete, the study would be complete, the city would then have the option of moving forward and trying to construct some detention if needed, or we would have the option of, again, just presenting this information to the developers to have them put in the improvements whenever they develop. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can you tell us exactly what area that is? I can't tell from the exhibit.
Sure, so, this study would, is actually just for two quarter sections within the southeast quadrant. The quarter sections that we would like to target first, and it's on page 71, is a very, not so great map.
Dark.
And I apologize about that. The areas that we would recommend to go first would be, number one, there is a quarter section that is just east of where, I'm sorry, west, just west, of the Edgewater Edition. That's a new addition that's being built, and that is an entire quarter section. The second quarter section that we think should be number two is the quarter section just west of the previous one I mentioned, and that one does contain the Broadmore Golf Course. We felt that with the recent decisions at the district court level, and knowing some of the concerns that the residents did have, we believe that having an overall drainage plan before the property is actually developed would, would be the best route to go.
So in your overall drainage plan, it would just be for these two quarter sections or all five of them?
We would, you know, we would start with these two, the price is just for these two, and if we felt like we wanted to continue on, we have, at this point, the quarter sections ranked in priority, but of course, that could change after we complete this.
Didn't we pay a guy in Tulsa Engineering Company to do this same study?
We paid Meachack Engineering to do a master drainage study of the entire city, and with that study, they did not actually look at placement of detention ponds for new development. All they did was try to determine the rate of flow within our existing creeks.
Okay, and how does this compare to the new FEMA maps that just were out weeks ago?
This will obviously take in every piece of information that is currently available. So they would look at their data.
So they will use that, in other words?
Absolutely, sure, yes.
Okay. So thoughts as to if it made sense for us to begin to do some of that work, how would we distribute that cost back to the developers?
That is one thing that this study would do. If we chose to go that route, then they would look at instituting or trying to develop a, basically an impact fee that could be charged to, for the city to recoup our cost.
Per acre of?
Right.
Developing land that's available to be developed?
Correct.
Correct. That's for the $6,350 cost?
Yes, yes, and again, that's just one option open to us, we don't have to choose that option.
Do you think that one and two are the most prime for development in the near future? Is that the reason for selecting those?
The impact fee, I think we'd have to address the lift station that we're gonna have to put in there too. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I make a motion, we approve.
So, okay, thank you, thank you. Now the motion and the second, any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of ordinance number 87518, amending Part 12, Chapter 5, Article A, Sections 12-1104, 12-1106, and 12-1111 of the Land Development Code by adding land use definitions for fast casual restaurant and personal storage facility, and amending the transportation impact fee rates for fast food, fast casual, and other restaurants, retail and commercial, and for personal storage facility, and establishing appeals procedure and fee.
Mayor and council, this ordinance is requesting to amend our transportation impact fee ordinance we currently have on the books. Over the past several years, we've seen a new category of land use become more prevalent, that would be the fast casual restaurant. The fast casual identifies themselves differently than fast food, based on the quality of the food, how long it takes for you to get your food, and table service involved. And they, they have argued that they need to have a lower transportation impact fee than a fast food category. This is because it does, they do take longer to serve you, and people tend to stay longer at the restaurants, their turnover isn't quite as high as a fast food restaurant. However, the fast casual term is a restaurant industry term that they have created for themselves, and very difficult to define it in a city code. So what we would recommend to do is to put fast casual and fast food restaurant in the same category, but actually lower that top fee of $3.44 to $3. This does give them a little bit of a break on how much money they're being charged based on their actual turnover and usage rate. And we would also recommend putting in a category called Restaurant Other, this would be your traditional sit-down restaurant, like a Holly's or Chili's. We would recommend raising the retail rate by 10 cents a square foot to 35 cents a square foot. And then also, we are recommending, and putting in another land use category for mini storage or personal storage, and because their usage rates are usually very low during the day, we would recommend putting that at 10 cents a square foot. And we also would like to update the appeals procedure. Today, we require appeals to be, complete a traffic impact study by an engineer, it's a very lengthy and time-consuming and expensive procedure, where oftentimes these questions can be resolved much more quickly. We would recommend to have a more standardized procedure for appeals and having a fee of $500 be accompanied with the appeal if it goes to our city engineer for a determination. And that's the amount of money that they would charge to make just a land use determination on whether or not a use falls within a certain category. I did do a review of other transportation impact fees, and it was very easy because there's only one other community in the metro area that has a transportation impact fee, and that's Oklahoma City, and their fees, transportation impact fee is relatively new, and they have many more categories than we do. But on page 73, I've included, there are a table that shows what our fees are versus what Oklahoma City's fees are. We're still below what Oklahoma City is doing, so I think that that gives us a bit of an edge when it comes to business recruitment. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can you explain what that fee goes towards?
I'm sorry?
Can you explain what the fee goes towards?
Sure, the transportation impact fee is a fee that goes into a special account, and that's used for capital improvements of the transportation system. So, most of our arterial roadways, whenever we rebuild them, usually the money will come from the transportation impact fee, if there's no other funding source available. So, I'm trying to think of an example of what that has happened. Santa Fe, when we redid Santa Fe by the Southmore High School, that was an ACOG project, but we were still required to put down 20%, and we got the 20% from our transportation impact fee fund.
So why do other cities not do it besides Oklahoma City?
I can't answer that question.
I was just curious.
I have a question, what do we single amount in different categories, like fast food, fast casual, and other restaurants? I mean, you go like Holly's, their rate was $1,537, the new rate's gonna be $2,152, but then you've got Potbelly's, which is $1,075, going to $12,900, and Oklahoma City's only $9,000.
Right, there's a big discrepancy between our fees and Oklahoma City fees, and they're low on some fees compared to us, but they're also very high on some fees compared to us.
Well, I guess the question I would ask is like, we're charging anywhere from $3.44 a square foot to 25 cents a square foot, why wouldn't you just total all that and average it out to $2.10 a foot?
Because different businesses have different impacts on the roadways and the traffic that they bring, and so, I mean, I think it's a fair assessment to somebody who's gonna, a fast food restaurant who has how many people through every day versus a storage unit who may not have as many people through.
But same, same thing could be said of car tags. A new car tag costs a whole lot more than a used car tag, but it drives just the same down the street.
Well, new car tag is your sales tax, that's why it costs so much more.
Mayor and council, what we tried to do with this study was compare our fees to other similar fees, and like Elizabeth said, Oklahoma City really is the one that has the most impact fees, different categories, and so we tried to match up with that, and really what, what prompted all this was the, the fast casual restaurants, where they, they had their own category, but it's really difficult to differentiate in many instances what's fast casual versus fast food. And so, this was just an attempt to try and, try and level this out, create the categories that we need for the businesses that hopefully will come into the community, and then also stay less than what Oklahoma City has. And so while there are some, you know, anomalies here, you know, if you look at the total on page 73, you know, in total, we're, we're just, just above half of what Oklahoma City charges as a whole.
But that half comes from the one thing, institutional services such as Integris, which is a hospital, their fee is $62,000 out of that $184,000. If you take that out, it's way off. We're scared by 30%.
Our office is quite a bit higher.
Yeah.
Industrial and office.
So, I mean, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, their office is high.
The question is, why do we need it at all? Is it, is it that important to us that we need those particular fees? If we in Oklahoma City are doing it, everybody's outpacing Oklahoma City as far as getting new businesses, do we need to do that too? Lose business to Oklahoma City and Norman, and Yukon, and all these other places, Midwest City's growing like crazy, that don't do it, Ardmore?
We've always, but these aren't, these aren't new fees, I mean, other than a couple of categories, right?
Right, right, we've had the transportation impact fee since 1990.
Oh, I know that.
997.
I know that, but I'm asking the overall question, do we actually need this?
I'll let the city manager answer that.
Do we wanna come up with a budget money some other way?
Right.
Well, Mayor, let me ask you something, if you, if you say you've got these visas in place and you've got a company, say like a Walmart that locates just on the other side of this in Oklahoma City instead of putting it on this side, which they had the opportunity to, because they didn't wanna pay impact fees, but they had to over in Oklahoma City, but say they didn't have to pay that, and you missed out on $2 million in sales tax, would it be worth it?
Well, given, given that example, no, but the, the purpose of the impact fees is to be able to complete other projects and other repairs that don't, don't get budgeted as far as the annual sales tax. So for instance, like when we have to, when we have to go make some, certain repairs on Santa Fe or another arterial street that, that, yeah, so I mean, that's, I mean, that's where that money comes from, and so that's how we're able to do it.
Right, most of our money comes from sales tax, and that is peanuts compared to sales tax, this is 100 and, what, 100 something million, well, it's $86,000, and our sales tax is 18 million.
That's just an example, though, that's not everything that happened.
Right, that's an example.
That's the newest.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so I have another question, the fast casual, it looks like it went, it's currently $3.44, so it's going to $3, which makes it seem like it's going down less. I'm kinda confused, because right now, the example is Potbelly's, which is fast casual, it was $1,075, now it's $12.9 with the new fee, that's going up 12 times.
Right, so today, fast casual- So today, fast casual, if they, if they don't have a drive-through, we just call them a Restaurant Other. If they have a drive-through, there, it's been debatable as to whether or not they were fast food or Restaurant Other. And Potbelly's happens to be in a strip center, so that makes it, they already paid a retail impact fee whenever they built the strip center. And then when Potbelly's moves in to, and they do a remodel and they add all of their drive-throughs and whatnot, we just pay, we just charge them a prorated amount.
Okay, so they weren't actually at the fast food casual or the fast casual then?
Right, right.
Okay, that wasn't exactly the same.
Yeah, the amount Potbelly's paid in this example was just twenty-five cents a square foot.
Right.
Which is the retail, not the fast casual.
Correct.
Thank you, motion we approve.
All right. Thank you. Second. Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number six is consider approval of ordinance number eight-eight-nine-eighteen, amending Part Twelve, Chapter Five, Article K, Sections Twelve dash five-six-one of the Land Development Code by adding a requirement for preserving the City of Moore survey monuments and establishing fee for setting monuments.
Mayor and council, this item has to do with our GIS monuments that, survey monuments that we set several years ago. They are being used by our engineers and developers' engineers in order to populate our GIS database whenever they turn in their asked builds and construction plans. What we have come across is that some new development is threatening to take away some of those monuments. Whenever they put in their own improvements, they will say that our monument is in the way, they have to remove it. And we don't want that to happen. If that happens too many times, there won't be enough monuments for people to select from. So we are proposing to institute a fee. If they do have to disturb our monument, we want our surveying contractor to go and reset it so it's set back on the same system so we won't have a discrepancy in data. And again, this would only apply if a developer could not, you know, amend his plans to leave our monument undisturbed in the ground.
Thank you, motion we approve.
Okay, thank you. Second. Thank you. We got a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number seven, consider approval of a contract with Moore Public Schools District in the amount of three hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars, eighty-eight cents to provide seven uniform school resource officers for FY eighteen and nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is just our annual renewal of the contract with the Moore Public School System to provide school resource officers to the two high schools and the three junior highs within the city limits of Moore. Moore Public Schools will continue to fund sixty-five percent of the salary and benefits of the seven SROs in that amount that you mentioned. We would recommend approval of this contract to continue our successful partnership with the Moore Public Schools. If any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Motion reapproved.
Second.
All right, thank you both. Okay. Is there anyone wants to, any comments or questions on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Thank you. Item number eight, consider approval of Old Town Park Master Plan. Parks Board recommended approval five-zero.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your packet, you have the entire master plan. In my presentation, I have included some of those, but I've replaced some of those with some slides to give you a little bit of history and background to this project and to talk about the process. Let me give you just the background, just real brief. The city purchased the property for this park about five years ago. If you recall, across from the new public safety building, there was a, I believe, a catering business, meat market place, I believe, at some point. So it's that. And then in conversations with the railroad, we realized that we had more property than we, than we thought that we had when we began the process. And so, that is reflected in the master plan that you have for you. We also talked about the development of this park as part of the twenty sixteen quarter cent sales tax that the voters approved in November of that year. So this project will be funded if we proceed with the master plan and the construction. It will be funded with that round of quarter cent sales tax. One of the things that we did was we, we had a great roadmap to follow with this project, and that was the process that we had for the Central Park project. It was a great success, a lot of citizen involvement, a stakeholder group. And then we also had a lot of involvement from staff and the Parks Board. So we replicated that process for this project. And we had five stakeholder meetings, and I've got a list of the stakeholders that I'll go over on this next slide. And they played a critical, critical part. And again, we had five meetings with them. We had a public input meeting in January of this year. We had Parks Board input in July of two thousand and eighteen, a couple, about a month and a half ago. And then they recommended approval, unanimous approval, at their regular July meeting. The stakeholder group included council members Danielle McKenzie and Councilmember Ham. We had two citizens and Old Town representatives, Sean Evans and Brent Will Berger. Our Parks Board representatives were Janie Mylum, and Janie is here, Jeff Arvin. City staff was Elizabeth and Stan, and then myself and Callie Gilbert, staff assistants and also played a, played a role in the process. And then our consultants, Anthony, and you all know Anthony, and some of his team played a critical role as well. This is the, the project, the area in question. I'll orient you. I know it's a little tough to make it out, but here's the railroad tracks right here. Main is here, and then Broadway right here. And so, the parkland is what's highlighted in red, sort of L-shaped, upside-down L. And then the railroad right away, and this is a map provided by BNSF, or the shaded area or the hatched area that you see right here extending down to the south. And this is Fourth Street right here in Central Park right there. When we, it was, this is one of the unique projects in that the stakeholders and the citizen input that we got really converged in that there wasn't a great deal of difference of opinion on a lot of things. It was felt that we, at this park, we wanted to continue to tell our story and our history and the uniqueness of Moore in some way. We wanted to have a train depot. I'll talk about that in some detail here in a few moments. Public art was really important. We want to, you know, the public art projects that we've had, the wooden soldiers and veterans, the donated project by Seven-Eleven at Little River, the public art project that the hospital did following the tornado, they've been very well received in the community, so we want to continue that. And we think that we're certainly ready for more public art. We didn't want the park to be stale in any way. We want it to be dynamic and changing in some way. We want to continue to develop partnerships in the community, and we've done a wonderful job of that through Central Park and many of our other efforts and our special events. We want this to be a different kind of park, not a, not a park where you might have a traditional playground or splash pad or ball field. We want it to be something different than that. And then we want to plan for an eventual connection to Central Park, and with the voters approving the Fourth Street underpass, that will happen because as a part of that project, there's a significant amount of money for a pedestrian bridge to connect Central Park to this park. So in particular, this is a plan view, if you will, so you're looking down at five thousand foot level. This is a walking trail right here. This is a plaza area with a piece of public art right here, a train depot right here, and then landscaping throughout. Now, the budget will not allow, this is a master plan, the budget will not allow to do all of this at any one time. This will be a phased project, but we feel very confident that we'll be able to do this and maybe a little bit south here. So again, this is a multi-phase project. This is looking south, so imagine we're above the public safety building looking to the south. This is the train depot here, the walk right here, the railroad tracks are right about in there. And this is not the public art that we're talking about. This is just to convey a, an idea of where it would be in the location of. Five kinds of things that we'll do in this park. We'll have turf grass, typical lawn-type grass. There'll be sculpture gardens, where we display public art. There'll be different kinds of grass that we'll display in some other areas. One of the things that we've tried to do the last few years is add color to our park, add landscaping and flowers. And so, we'll certainly do that with this park on a grander scale, if you will. So we'll have seasonal flowers. If you've been to OU and you've seen their South Oval and the landscaping that they do, it's absolutely magnificent. This wouldn't be on that scale, but that's certainly a roadmap that we use to try to follow. And then lastly, the purple areas here will be seating areas that people, families, individuals can enjoy, enjoy the park, the trains going by, just enjoy green space and recreational space. This is looking southwest. This is that plaza courtyard area right here, and of course, the depot off to your left there. This is looking north. This is the, one of those areas where you'd have the public art to your left, seating areas right here, lights that would match, that would light up the trail and also match the ones that we have at Central Park, and then the various kinds of landscaping here. I'll touch upon this just, just very briefly. You know, I mentioned that dynamic space, and that was one of the common themes that the stakeholder group really wanted this to be. We looked, we did our research, we did a lot of research on these kinds of things. We've visited a community where we looked at an old depot and what it was, and if you're not careful, you can do a museum or something like that, you can use a public facility, and if you don't change it, you can visit once and never have to go back again. So we didn't want that here. We want this to be something that changes to where if you visit once, you want to go back again, and if you do go back again, it's different. It's something, something different, something for you to continue to enjoy. So not be stagnant. We wanted to continue to create a vibrancy in Old Town. So the two general ideas that the stakeholder group came up with was to do, to have a coffee shop operate in the depot where we would, the way we'd go about that is a request for proposal to select an independent business and an independent operator to operate that, and then have an artist in residence. We did a great deal of research about this. We talked to the city of Oklahoma City and had them come down and visit with us about an artist in residence, and they feel like that it's a great time to have that kind of a thing. And that public art would be something where you had art shows, art unveilings throughout the year. Students could display art that they had done in class through the school system and library. We could put those on display where the parents and grandparents could come up and visit the park and see their kids and their, and the classes, projects that they did. And then we would leverage Central Park to some degree. We have a great many individuals that take art classes and pottery classes and those kinds of things, so we could have those instructors visit this, this park. The artist in residence could come to Central Park and teach a class and vice versa. So we could, if we make that connection, which I think that we certainly will, it's almost like we've expanded Central Park to the north. So we, I think we have a great opportunity, and this space would allow us to do that. And both would coexist in one space, and the businesses, each would feed off the business of each other and make each one a little bit more successful. So this is what we were looking at. This is the depot, and I call this a one-to-one scale depot. This is the exact scale and size as the original depot opened, which opened in September of eighteen ninety-five. That color scheme was used by the Santa Fe Railroad from the nineteen twenties to the nineteen fifties. The northern two-thirds would be the coffee shop space right here, a restroom here, and then the artist in residence would use this as studio space to create their art. And I would mention, I think this is a great time to talk about it. We've heard talk in the community about getting the old depot back. We pursued that. It's privately owned. We made several attempts to talk to the owner, and they simply wouldn't call us back. We did look at the depot, that if we were to get it, what it would take to move it, renovate it, it would be very expensive. So we think going this route by just building a new one to look like the old one, we get a better depot. We don't have the history in it, but it's a better depot, and we think that it serves our purposes much better. And it's cheaper, frankly, it's cheaper to build. These are different views, all the elevations. This is an oblique or an angled view. This little structure that you see right here would be for the community to use for, if there were some events going on outside, the artists could also use it. There's a door right here that would go into their space, they could also use that as maker space for, if they're doing pottery or welding or those kinds of things. So it would have a double use. And this is the inside. And again, what you see on the walls is not what we're proposing, it's just to give you an idea of the kinds of things that we could display on the walls. We would tell some of our history through this space, through some displays, some pictures, photographs, those kinds of things in this, in this area right here. And again, this is seating for, for the coffee shop. So moving forward, should you all adopt this master plan, we have a roadmap that we'll follow. We'll bring a contract in, to you, where we'll have TAP Architecture and their team design the park. We estimate we'd start construction about eight or nine months from now, spring of two thousand and nineteen. The budget for this project's approximately fifty, or five hundred thousand dollars. Take a little bit less than a year to complete it. The stakeholders will, some or all of them, would like to keep together to do the RFP for the coffee shop operator, as well as to do a call for artists and select an artist. And so, this is the first phase of what will be a multi-phase project. I'll take any questions, but we would recommend approval. Again, this comes to you with a unanimous recommendation of approval from the park.
And the five hundred thousand, that's already been approved through the sales tax?
It has, yes, Mayor.
The artist in residence, would that rotate occasionally?
It would, yeah. What we're looking at, the coffee shop operator would be a longer-term lease, three to five years, something like that. You don't, you wouldn't want to change them every year. The artist in residence would be an annual thing. And so, you would have them come in, work a year. You can do it several different ways. You could have them provide the city a piece of public art every year, and so you'd have something new, and you could add to those plazas that we saw in the master. So yes, it would be.
And the five hundred thousand dollar budget, would you explain approximately how much that would cover? I know we talked about it in committee, but just so the council can hear.
Yes. The five hundred thousand would cover the site work, the depot, a piece of public art. We've set aside fifty thousand of that budget for, for the first piece of public art, landscaping.
And how much of the walking trail did that cover?
The walking trail is part of the, what we call the flatwork budget. I think we have set aside about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand for that.
And it would cover the entire?
No, it will only go as far south as the budget would allow. So it would do around the depot, in that courtyard area, and maybe a little bit south, but we don't know how far south until we actually get the bids in.
But you would anticipate that with the construction of the underpass and so forth, we would be able to connect?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
And I would have just a couple of quick comments. I love being on our council and getting to come here and vote for things. I love, I mean, it's, you know, it's a part of it, but I really enjoy getting to be a part of some of the different projects that happen in our city. I'm always impressed when city staff listens to city council and members of our community and others, and we have discussions, and they're able to take all of that and then be able to present something like this that is exciting. And I would love to have that old depot, but I'd look at the one that we're going to reconstruct, and we have the footprint, and we can go and look at what the original one looked like, and we can, we can rebuild that in Old Town Moore. So I am excited about it and appreciate all the work that everybody puts in making this stuff happen.
I think it'll be a great project. I think, you know, one of the things that I've been a part of and staff, and really all of us have been a part of, is the uniqueness of this time as far as doing these kinds of projects. You know, Central Park is something that was never done before, will never be done again in our history. So to be a part of that is something special, and to be a part of this is something really special, too, because the depot moved from that location in nineteen seventy-three, and so forty-five years, we're going to get something back. Not that depot, but something like it. And so, that's, that's a... Not that depot, but something like it, and so that's, that's a special project to be a part of, for sure.
May I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, thank you both.
Thank you, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions?
Danielle McKenzie. Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, good job. Thank you.
Good job, young man. Thank you.
Item number nine is consider approval of budget supplement for FY seventeen, eighteen in the amount of $388,155 to budget increase street project revenues and related expenses.
Mayor and council, amendment eighteen dash nineteen for Fund Twelve is necessary to complete the fiscal year eighteen budget for Old Town and Ward Three. Revenue from a reimbursement from Make-up Oklahoma for the Pol Road project and interest for Fund Twelve will be budgeted, as well as funds from fund balance to offset increased cost in these two projects. Old Town had more progress on the project than we had originally anticipated, and so additional budget is required for the Old Town project, but we still expect to come within budget. Ward Three, we had several projects that require additional work to complete, and so this will cover those expenses as well. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
It's always Ward Three. Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
We have an addendum, addendum nine point one is consider approval of a budget supplement for FY seventeen, eighteen in the amount of $23,900 to budget increase federal grant revenues and related expenses.
Mayor and council, this amendment for Fund A is necessary to complete the eighteen budget for two federal programs, the COPS Hiring Program and Oklahoma City Economic and Identity Task Force. Expenses for these two programs went over the original budget. However, the federal government did reimburse the city for those expenses, so this budget amendment will just budget additional revenue and the increase.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, thank you both. We'll have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Item carries. At this time, excuse me, at this time, we will recess the city council meeting and convene the More Public Works Authority meeting. Item number ten is a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular More Public Works Authority meeting held August sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Item B is ratif-, excuse me, ratify action of the city council on acceptance of the annual actuarial report for fiscal year end of June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen in the amount of $45,948.57, and approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand, excuse me, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen in the amount of $609,569.32.
Would you approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the More Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Morris Management meeting. Item number eleven is also a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Morris Management meeting held August sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen in the amount of $247,242.93, or seventy-three cents, excuse me.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Morris Risk Management Development meeting and convene the More Economic Development Authority meeting. Glenn, would you call it over?
Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Item thirteen is consent docket, subletter A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular More Economic Development Authority meeting held July sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
I'd make a motion that we approved those minutes. I think I beat you. It is a consent docket. We have a motion and a second. Would you call it over?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Recession, now, one hour recess, More Economic Development Authority meeting, and re-keeping the city council.
All right, thank you. That directory reflected all Americans that were present before are still present. Item number fourteen is new business. Item A, citizens forum for items not on the agenda. We have no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, item B is items from the city council or trustees.
Just a reminder, buddy, the More War Run is this Saturday. Starts at seven thirty. If you haven't signed up, get there early. Starts at Moore High School, and it's right here in Old Town. It'll be a big event.
All right, thanks. Anybody else? Item C is items from the city council, or city manager or the trust manager.
Mayor and council, just a couple of things. As you know, last Friday, we had our groundbreaking for the I-35 overpass, and so that was a nice event. Ended up, great weather for it. Construction should take about thirteen months. They're currently working on the, restriping the lanes in I-35 in that area to use one of the, the shelters, so a few more days left on that, but during the, most of the construction, all six lanes will be open, north and southbound, which is good. And then last Saturday night was City of Moore Night at the ballpark, so several of us went to the Dodger game, and our own Tammy Cohen snagged a foul ball behind the first baseline, so she did a scrounge.
Okay. Is that it? Item fifteen is executive session. Section three oh seven, Title Twenty-Five Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A is discussed, considered, and deemed appropriate, take action to join pending litigation against opioid manufacturers, distributors, and other potential defendants that are responsible for the opioid epidemic, and for authorization for legal counsel and staff to take actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the City of Moore as authorized by Twenty-Five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven, B dash four. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion. We convene the executive session.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. We adjourn to executive session. Thank you for coming.
Would you please call the row back to reconvening for executive session.
Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Item may is discussed and considered deemed appropriate, take action to join pending litigation against opioid manufacturers, distributors, and other potential defendants that are responsible for the opioid epidemic and authorization of illegal counsel staff to take actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the City of Moore as authorized by 25 Oklahoma statutes 307b-4.
Make a motion that we take no action at this time.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, I am curious. Item number 16 is adjourned.
So, would it?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming.